Okay, welcome everyone to Keep Kern Beautiful Committee meeting on August 17th at 2:00 PM. I would like to call to order the meeting today at 2:02 PM. My name is Alicia Bietis and I'm the Keep Kern Beautiful Committee Coordinator. I'd like to welcome the committee members as well as the Kern County Public Works staff on the call and county council and guests. And now I'd like to move on to item number two, roll call. When a committee member hears your name, please let me know that you're in attendance. Daniel Harrison.
I'm here.
Thank you. Karen Sanders.
I'm here.
Thank you. Linda Martin. Andrea Medina.
I'm here.
Thank you. Gary Ananian.
I'm here.
Thanks Gary. Brian Duhart.
I'm here, thank you.
Thank you Brian. David Caddell. Steve Kinsey. And Christopher McGeehee.
Present.
Thanks Chris. Great, a quorum has been met. So moving on to item number three of the agenda, the approval of the resolution for our Keep Kern Beautiful Committee to hold remote meetings. In addition to the agenda, a copy of resolution number 2022008 was included as an attachment. It's a resolution of the Keep Kern Beautiful Committee authorizing remote teleconference meetings of the Keep Kern Beautiful Committee for the period of August 5th, 2022 through September 3rd, 2022 pursuant to the Ralph and Brown Act. May I get a motion from the committee to approve the resolution?
So moved, this is Andrea Medina.
Thank you. May I get a second?
Second, this is Karen Sanders.
Thank you Karen. Do we have all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, any opposed? Okay, hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you. So now I'd like to move on to item number four on the agenda, the meeting minutes from our July 20th meeting, which were also included in the attachment that was sent out for your reference. Does anyone from the committee or anybody on the call have any questions about the meeting minutes? Or any comments? Okay, I'm hearing none. May I get a motion from the committee member to approve the meeting minutes from July 20th, 2022?
I'll go ahead and motion.
Thank you Gary. May I get a second?
Also, okay.
Thank you Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries, thank you. Okay. Moving right along to our item number five on the agenda, new business. The past couple of meetings, we've, as a committee, we've gone over some cleanup supply options to spend with the available funds the committee has. At our last meeting, we came up with the following items, as well as quantities. And as a committee, we voted on the upcoming meeting to review the proposal of the items and approve the purchase of those. I did send the committee a copy of this as well to review, and this is a copy of what I sent them. You can see the highlighted options are the total quantity. Here is the quantity that we had discussed at the last meeting, on average forty to fifty, depending on what kind of allowed our budget. And depending on that, I kind of went ahead and chose that number. And then we totaled the cost. And in total, all of those items would be $1,338.38 plus tax and shipping. And I'm hoping to get quite a few of these products as for free shipping through Amazon. And if free shipping is an option, that's the option that I'm going to choose so that it doesn't affect the total. But we do need a factor in tax for these items. So I'm assuming it might be like a little bit closer to 1,500, but I didn't want to put that number down because it wasn't going to be an exact number. But if we want to go ahead and does any of the committee members have any questions on the items, the quantity and the cost associated? Any questions from anyone on the call?
This is Karen Sanders. I have the questions and I move that we make the purchase as you presented in the email attachment.
Okay, thank you. And what was your question?
I don't have any questions.
Oh no, I'm sorry, I thought you said you had a question. Okay, thank you Karen.
I have no questions. Move that we make the purchase.
Okay, perfect. So here are no questions. I received a motion from Karen Sanders to move forward with the purchase of these items. And once again, these will all be available to all committee members. On a first come, first served basis. And a lot of these items are reusable, so we always want to just make sure to that I keep track of them and so everyone has access. Okay, so hearing the motion, can I get a second from the committee member to move forward with the purchase?
Duhart will second.
Okay, thank you Brian. Okay, all in favor?
Madam Chairperson. Madam Chairperson. This is county council. Since this involves the expenditure of funds, I'd recommend you do a roll call vote as opposed to a all ayes or all opposed.
Okay, thank you. I will do so. When you hear your name, please let me know if either you are for or against this proposal. Gary Ananian?
I'm for it.
Okay. Brian Duhart?
Yes.
Thank you. Christopher McGeehee?
Yes.
Daniel Harrison?
Yes.
Karen Sanders?
Yes.
And Andrea Medina? I'm Andrea Medina.
Yes, did you hear me?
Yeah. Oh no, I didn't.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So it looks like we got all yays from the committee. Is there any other steps I would need to take? Goojaada?
Oh no, it's county council. You can say county council. Thank you. Or GK. No. Just recommending you have a complete record whenever funds are being otherwise you're great proceeding with a yea or nay. So nothing further from my point of view. Thank you for asking.
Okay, thank you. Great, so we heard all in favor from each of the committee members, so we will move forward with the approval and the purchase of the items brought to the committee. Okay, great. Now moving on to item number, item number five, section B, the Keep Kern Committee funding. And a couple of meetings ago, we had talked about the possibility of fundraising options and ideas. And I just kind of wanted to bring that up again for discussion, especially now that we are depleting some of our funds. And so we definitely want to focus on generating some funds for future events to sustain sustainability for the committee. Really, this is open for discussion. I mean, if any of the committee members have any ideas or they've done some type of fundraising campaigns in the past. We did mention something about like generating, writing some sort of letters and sending those out to receive sponsorship from corporations or companies. And that's definitely an option. But any other feedback from the committee or anyone on the call on this item?
Yeah, I agreed to write, this is Dan, I agreed to write the letter and I'm still willing to write it. I'm happy to do so. And have people edit and revise it and provide feedback.
Okay. I know another thing that would be helpful would be like, say each committee member had maybe five different partners, corporations, organizations they had in mind that they could possibly reach out to, send this letter to. That's kind of an idea I had just kind of as a starting point. Any, any other suggestions like that? Does anyone have? Maybe you guys done in the past?
Yeah. I was.
Go ahead Gary.
You can do sponsorship programs with the businesses. We do that up here and it's pretty successful. We can target businesses that are related to the industries of like cleaning and maintenance and stuff like that, that want to get involved with community efforts through a sponsorship system where they cover the cost of the equipments we need and et cetera and stuff like that.
That sounds cool. So by program, you mean kind of like what tomorrow? Can you give a little bit more details about that? Gary, like.
Yeah, so.
Do that.
So right now we have like the great Kern River cleanups coming up on September 17th. And what we do is we buy all the tools and everything we need for the volunteers. And for this cleanup, because it's a large scale cleanup, the volunteers get to stick, they get to take the picker upper tools home. And we buy the cheaper ones, like the three dollar ones that are like one time use kind of thing. So instead of throwing them away, we kind of just give them away to the volunteers. But with that, they get like the high vis vest, they get gloves, they get like stickers, they get a tee shirt, you know, for the cleanup and stuff like that. So we tally up the cost of that. And then what we do is we solicit donations from some of the businesses in town to cover the costs. And those businesses will have like their logos on the back of the tee shirt for the cleanup. You know, so like, let's say we need twenty five hundred dollars, so we have sponsorship levels from like a hundred dollars to five hundred dollars. And you know, sometimes we can have one business cover the whole thing or we have seven or eight businesses covering like the two or three hundred dollar sponsorship level to cover all the costs for what we need. So if we were to need, let's say, more picker uppers or whatever like that, we just kind of like figure out what the cost is and then break that down into like a sponsorship system. But I know for this, these are the things, we're going to keep most of these. We're kind of buying better quality items. And so we can hold on to like those orange pickers can last for years and years and years. I think the majority of the cost we're going to need would probably go into like trash bags and PPEs mainly.
I like the idea of sponsorship. It seems like you would need, I mean, you're able to put it on the back of a tee shirt. I'm trying to think of how we could represent the organizations that sponsor us. What, what vehicle we could use to acknowledge your sponsorship? And I'm.
Yeah, for us, we have like our tee shirt, like the front of the logo is the cleanup logo. We have that, our big cleanup has its own logo that we had made just for that reason, so we can solicit sponsorships and give them something back. And on the back of the tee shirt, it's got logos of all the sponsors. You know, like Crystal Geyser is donating like a half pallet of bottled water to us. So like their sponsorship, oh, they're because they're in kind sponsored. They're not giving us money, but they're giving us like all the waters that we need for the event. And like Kern River Brewing Company would be offering like vouchers or something for the volunteers to eat lunch afterwards and stuff like that. Like if it's not money, then find a way to do an in kind sponsorship on that.
I like it.
And Gary, as far as like your outreach for those sponsorships, is it kind of more like a handout? You do like outreach to those companies like with the sponsorship levels? And if they're interested, they fill that out and work with someone from your team? Kind of how that works?
Yeah, I mean, it's easy up here because we're in the Kern Valley, it's a small town. I'm able to go out there like in a couple hours and knock it out and just go door to door and talk to all the businesses. We have repeat sponsors that do it every year. So those usually I'll just text the owner or send them an email to let them know that we're doing it again. If they're interested in, just send us a check. But yeah, I mean, it's just really just going door to door. We'll make a Facebook announcement as well on social media to let people know that we have sponsorship opportunities if they're interested. Sometimes we get out of area businesses that want to sponsor from like big or for the rich press that want to get involved. So that as well.
Okay. That's helpful, I like that.
So Alicia, can you think of a way that we could, we could recognize the sponsors? I mean, we don't have tee shirts necessarily. Is there some other thing that I'm not thinking of that we could?
No, we actually. Yeah, no, great point. We actually do have tee shirts already made with our Keep Kern Beautiful logo on them. It's a limited amount. I can't at the top of my head remember how many. But you know, if we do want to do another tee shirt order, maybe you know, putting some logos on the back of the tee shirt like Gary had mentioned, I think that's a great idea. Also, like a banner, you know, like a Keep Kern Beautiful banner with like a bunch of logos on it, like whenever there's an event, whenever you guys have a committee event, if you guys want to borrow it, it can be borrowed within the committee. I know, I think Andrea Medina mentioned like a reusable recycle tote and possibly putting logos on that as well. So those are options.
I haven't been to any of, the events that you send to us, say, you'll send, you'll send emails to us about events that are happening of interest. Is there anything that we could take that would be mobile that we could, like a pull up banner or something easy that would make sense? I don't even know if it makes sense, but is there anything that would make sense to take to those events? That could have our.
Yeah, I mean, a pull up banner is an option too. We have, you know, a banner that you can tie up to the easy up. And that's like an option, but also a pull up banner can be something that can easily be made. With like, the only thing I'm thinking is if like, I mean, we maybe only want to like put like a certain group of sponsors on there. Just if, you know, I mean, I mean, we, that's, we can talk about that, you know, at another time. But really it's just, just different options of what you guys are kind of looking for as far as having it at events.
And I think that Gary's, I think Gary's idea is great. I think we can expand on that as well with some of the companies here in Kern County. I know the oil companies like to get involved with stuff like this. And I mean, with them, with their budgets, we could be asking for five, 10, $25,000 increments as like a title sponsor for the organization and so forth. That we could look at for like an annual sponsorship instead of just an event.
Alicia, I am. Thanks Myra. Yeah, and that's interesting, like knowing like the title of the sponsorship. I don't know if there's specifically like any sense though. I've seen a lot of like gold, silver, platinum sponsorship. But like Gary, you mentioned, I mean, Chris mentioned title sponsors could be something more significant, see more value in that. We can kind of promote that way. So as far as like next steps, how do each of the committee members feel about like coming up with like maybe five or 10 companies that they feel like maybe they have like a personal relationship with? Or like has Gary mentioned some, a company that, you know, would benefit from a community cleanup? Or using some of their cleanup materials? We could come up with items for like outreach. And then once we have like a sponsorship handout kind of put together, we can start kind of doing some outreach. And we actually reaching out to these companies.
Madam Chairperson, this is your county council again. I think that there is a business benefit to these sponsorships. You know, the companies are paying, but they're also getting, the reason they're paying is because it's improving their position in the community. It's making them appear no doubt responsible and caring. And that kind of goodwill has a, has a business benefit. I think that since it's a government agency and it's a Brown Act board, it's a county organization, I would at least let all the businesses in a given area know that this opportunity is available and solicit your, your sponsorships that way as opposed to going out and selecting specific businesses. Because you may get some feedback that why didn't, why wasn't I included in that solicitation? So that's just my advice too. I think you're, you're definitely on the right track here, it's a great idea. But in terms of how you do it, so it doesn't appear that you, that a county entity is benefiting one business over another, is to perhaps post on your website or some other public mechanism to let folks know, hey, this opportunity is available, we're going to be making these decisions in a certain timeframe. If you're interested, contact this number, et cetera. And then go from there. So again, just my recommendation.
Can I follow up on the question on that though? Can we, does that exclude individual contact? If, if the opportunity is posted on the website that we're interested in sponsorships, does that? Are you suggesting that we wouldn't then call a specific company to ask them if they're interested? Would that be?
I would, I would do your public solicitation. I'd do your public solicitation first and then go with your.
Does it preclude us from then asking specifically?
No. No. It doesn't. I just take that initial first step so that when you do reach out, yeah.
I understand, I understand, thank you. That's great clarification.
Michelle, you have a question?
Yeah, just a question for these businesses that make these donations. Is this tax deductible as, as the organization, Keep Kern Beautiful is not for profit?
I believe so.
GK, would you know?
Yeah. I don't know the answer to that question. If you're a 501(c)(3), I would think that it would fall out of that zone, but tax is not my area of expertise. I'd have to, you want to make a referral to county council, I can probably get it back to you by your next meeting and let you know so you can let the businesses know.
I think that would be a good point to make to the businesses.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you Michelle and thank you GK, that's great clarification. And so as far as like a starting point for us, helping us out there. We do have a Facebook page that we can utilize to get this message out as well as our website. Our Kern County Public Works website has a Keep Kern Beautiful Committee page where we can house that sponsorship form and promote it on our Facebook page. So yeah, so that's, that's great to know as a starting point. And then also finding out if our nonprofit is tax deductible before we come up with that sponsorship form. So that'll be the first step, coming up with that sponsorship form and going from there. Do we have any questions or other comments from the committee?
I have a question, Duhart.
Yes?
So I understand they're going to, we're going to make an inquiry to find out if we do have the tax advantage status. And to follow up on that, if we do not, I'd like to find out what the possibility of establishing a foundation would be.
Okay. Yes, I think, but I will confirm that Kern Committee does fall under the Kern Foundation. And that's how we're able to collect funds from sponsorship. It goes through that channel and then we're able to pull the funds when needed. But I will, so I believe a foundation has already been established, but I will confirm that, Brian. Thank you.
Oh, okay, if we already have a foundation, that kind of almost answers that question. Just saying if we did not have that foundation, we did not have the access to that, then maybe that might be something we'd like to inquire to see if we're allowed to establish that. But if it's already there, then we're good, I think.
Okay. Okay. Okay, and any other questions before we move on to the next item? Okay, hearing none. I just want to briefly touch on item number five, section C. The Kern County Fair is coming up toward the end of September for about 12 days. And we are going to have our Kern County Public Works staff perform some outreach at that booth. But I wanted to open up the opportunity to committee members who are interested. We will be highlighting Keep Kern Beautiful specifically on Thursday, September 22nd. There's various shifts available and this would be a volunteer opportunity. We are making some fun tee shirts for the event. And parking and admission will be covered for all volunteers. But I did forward each of the committee members those shift schedules. The fair opens at four and then closes at 11:00. And we separated the shifts between like three and four hours. So if you guys are interested, we'd be more than happy to have you there. Just talking about Keep Krim Beautiful, how you guys, you know, go about organizing community cleanups, just any kind of interest at the community or questions from the community that they may have. It'd be great to have at least one of you on that day. So if you can, I just want to take a minute to check you guys' calendar on your availability. I can do some follow up with you next week or so, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention for that fair opportunity. Any questions? Okay. All right, so now I'd like to move on to item number six, presentation by Karina Mendez on recent and upcoming community cleanup efforts. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. So let's go ahead and start with our rapid stats. For the countywide dump sites cleared, we have 3,371, 765 tons collected, 576 mattresses have been collected with 429 being recycled, 315 encampments have been cleared. And we've had three collection events so far this month for hazardous waste collections. Those have happened in Tehachapi, Ridgecrest and Shafter. And there are still three more coming up. So August 20th, there will be one in Tehachapi. There will be two on August 27th at Kern Valley Transfer Station and the Ridgecrest Special Waste Facility. And just last Saturday, we had a bulky waste collection event in Wofford Heights. We had 38 people come out to that event. It was really good turnout for the area. And we're waiting to get the tonnages from that event. But I'll be sharing that next month when we have that information available. Next month, we do have a bulky waste collection event planned for the Button Willow area on September 3rd at the Button Willow Rec and Park District. That's at 556 Milo Avenue. We will have the Suzer Chavez Environmental Corps out there collecting the e-waste and tires again. And Westside Waste Management, excuse me, will be there collecting the bulky items. And the Chamber for Button Willow is planning on hosting a community cleanup. We're still waiting on getting confirmation from them that they're going to go ahead with it. But they do one usually in September in preparation for their Fall Farm Festival. And so they were thinking about doing it alongside our bulky waste collection event. So we will, I'll get back with Alicia and let her know if the cleanup is still going on. And she can send out that information with the committee. Any volunteers that want to attend that? And that's everything for me.
Thank you Karina. Any comments from the committee, any questions? Okay. Okay, great, moving on to um item number seven. Do you have any announcements or reports that the committee members would like to share?
Yeah, Karen Sanders here, um we're planning a um cleanup along California City Boulevard on September the seventeenth, which is the keep or it's American Cleanup Day. And um, yeah, we're doing this in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce. And we're hoping to tackle California City Boulevard. It's gonna be from seven thirty A M to eleven A M that day.
Great. That's awesome, Karen, and we spoke earlier about um us getting together to provide you some supplies for that event. Yes. Thank you. Okay, so I'm hearing no more comments, um let's just, I'd like to segue to item number eight. Um, I just have something to announce as well, um this is in regards to um the National Cleanup Day that Karen was referring to on Saturday, September seventeenth. Um, I did find out that September is um National Cleanup Month. And um as you know, Karen is hosting that cleanup event in California City. Um, and um I just wanted to see if any other committee members had anything scheduled for that day, I think I overheard Gary mention something you had on September seventeenth.
Yeah, we have the Great Kern River Cleanup uh on September seventeenth. Um, uh typically, we do the Lower Kern River from the mouth of the canyon to uh Lake Isabella, uh but this year we're shifting our cleanup to the Upper Kern River, which is out into Larry County. Um, the Forest Service this year awarded a concessionaire contract to a company who took over all the camping and recreational sites around Lake Isabella and the Lower River. Um, so uh the majority of the work we were doing before is not needed anymore, the concessionaires have camp hosts now living at these sites who are taking care of all the the trash issues. Um, the only thing we get involved in is like vandalism, like water quality issues and stuff like that. Um, so we decided, we made the decision to switch the cleanup to the Upper River this year. Um, since the Upper River still has a lot of dispersed camping and open areas that aren't managed or hosted. But you know, um we will have, I think, two locations in Kern County. Um, because we have uh Kern County Sheriff's uh Search and Rescue is participating in the cleanup this year. And they're not allowed to go to Larry County, so we're gonna have them assigned to like probably in Kernville uh in the Wofford Heights area of the Kern River, so um that's probably the only areas that we have that will be in Kern County.
Awesome. Thanks, Gary, um any other committee members, I mean, do you guys have anything planned or are you interested in possibly hosting a cleanup in your, within your district? I know it's um exactly a month out, I know it's on a Saturday, um it doesn't necessarily have to be on a Saturday, it just may be sometime around that date. Um, I can follow up with um each of you. But um I know Karen and um Gary would appreciate as many volunteers as you can get, so um if you guys are interested and as well in, you know, joining their cleanup efforts, I think that would be great as well. Okay. Okay, I'm hearing no more comments, um I'll move on to item number nine if there's any um additional comments or from anyone on the call before we move forward. Okay, and moving on to item number ten, uh we will say um our next meeting will be on Wednesday, September twenty-first at two P M. And then um I'd like to move on to item number eleven to adjourn um today's meeting, if we have no other further comments or questions. I'll say to adjourn today's meeting at eleven thirty-six, I mean, I'm sorry, twelve thirty-seven. Um, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion.
Okay, may I?
DuHart will second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries to adjourn today's meeting, thank you all, and enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.